Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, June 8th, 2022 Penfield Town Board Work Session. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I would like to note for the record that Board members Cole and Lee are absent this evening. Also here with us tonight is Deputy Town Clerk Sue Scheit. Our several directors, Carrie Ivors, Mark Valentine, Barbara Chirdo, and Heidi Baal. So, moving along to our approval of minutes from May 25th. Are there any questions about them?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second those.
I have a motion by Councilperson Ockenden and a second by Councilperson Draw. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Aye.
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 Thank you. We've received monthly reports from some of the department heads. We are still waiting on the one from the tax receiver. She is out ill, so that is why there's a delay for that report. No guests in the audience this evening, so we'll move right into our action items. Oh, I'm sorry. No, you know what? I would like to make a few changes to the agenda. Part of this is because of, we're waiting on information still that we thought we would have in, so we'd like to table Action Item B, which is LED Streetlight Upgrade, until the 22nd. And we'd also like to table at the request of the applicant, Item D, K-2 Incentive Zoning And then, because of our reduced numbers on the Town Board this evening, we would also like to table the Heritage Month Discussion until June 22nd as well. Thank you so much.
Would you like a motion, too?
Yes.
I would make a motion. We table items under Action Items, Items B, D, and J, as the supervisor mentioned.
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Councilperson Draw and a second from Councilperson Ockenden to table Action Items B, D, and J until the June 22nd Board Meeting. Okay? Great. Thank you very much. Now, we can begin with our action items. The first one is a continuation of our public discussion about the ARPA funds. And tonight, we have Director of Finance Barbara Chirdo, Director of Planning and Engineering, Mark Valentine, and myself presenting about where we're at in the process. I should mention, too, that I'm trying to encourage, we are all trying to encourage residents who have questions or concerns to speak up. We will have public participation at our next legislative session, which is June 15th. You can also feel free to email the town at any time through our website, and we will also be continuing this discussion at our June 22nd Work Session. But again, want to involve the public. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, as we've discussed at a couple of work sessions, we have the state and local fiscal recovery funds that we refer to as ARPA because they are part of the American Rescue Plan Act. What we've talked about is the rules of use. It is revenue loss due to COVID-19, and we can use it for provision of governmental services. So that's kind of a broad category. The funds are intended for the long-term benefit of the community, so as we've discussed at the couple of work sessions, trying to target different areas of town and what will be most impactful to help the residents. And all funds must be obligated by 12/31/2024, and then they must be fully expended by 12/31/26, obligated meaning either things on order or under contract. And then, we did receive our first tranche in 2021, $1,912,866. The second tranche is expected to be probably July. It goes through the state first, so they kind of can hold it for a little bit and then release it to us. That being said, we have discussed several things, several projects. Priority projects that have come up have been identified by the Town Board based on past several years of looking at some of the things that really would benefit the town. Improvements to Shadow Pines, including a restroom/shelter, would have a little bit of a shelter on one side of the restroom, a parking lot, utilities to serve that restroom, and pickleball courts. So that would be the investment at Shadow Pines. Upgrade to LED streetlights, which is what Eric was going to speak about tonight. He is still gathering information, so he'll have more details on that. And then, improvements at the Town Center for Corners. That's still in development and discussion. Again, looking for feedback from the residents, and the Town Board is kind of reviewing a lot of things. We've put some planters there that started, so some ideas just to kind of bring some life to the area. We've identified an estimated cost and timeline. The improvement to Shadow Pines, estimated to be 1.5 million. That is, again, an estimate, and timeline would be to start this year, hopefully with the utilities and parking lot in place to get that infrastructure underway, and then look to do the courts and the bathroom next spring and summer. Right, Mark?
That's the hope and the plan.
Okay. And then, the LED streetlights, rough estimate, $450,000. We know just the materials alone are about $200,000, based on discussions with Eric, but we are hoping to pull that trigger to get that done this year. We have the audit complete of all the different lightheads, so we should get that done by the fall, and that will benefit, obviously, the entire town, and also, it's great for the environment, will save money. It's win-win all the way across the board. The Town Center for Corners, estimated number 100,000, and again, that's going to take place between 2022 and 2023 as ideas come in and as the Town Board decides what we can actually do in that space. So, so far, out of the money that we are receiving, we've allocated prox, a little over $2 million estimated, on the priority projects. Those priority projects, the next steps as we move forward for Shadow Pines, the engineer design consultant for the facility and site work, and then the upgrade to the LED streetlights, we already have the audit complete by Real Term Energy. We would be either going out to public bid ourselves or piggybacking on a set public bid through a cooperative purchasing. Eric and I will kind of ferret all those details out together. And then, again, at the Town Center, develop a conceptual improvement plan. That'll probably be Mark and Carrie. They'll be running with that one, I'm guessing. But that's kind of where we are, and I'm hoping that we can get things moving forward and start to see some kind of impactful changes in the community.
Thank you, Barbara. Yeah, we always want to keep moving forward, for sure. And I know that now that the Town Board members have had some soak time, they might want to just contribute some additional thoughts or comments. One of the things that I do want to mention is that we received a question about LaSalle's Landing and, you know, taking it, moving it off the list of priority items. I do want to be very clear that we really do think LaSalle's Landing is a priority. It's a great way to show off our town along the section of waterfront that we have. We just believe that there are some very appropriate other sources of funding out there that would free up monies for ARPA to be used on other projects. So we're pursuing those other avenues, actually. And is there any comment from the Board? Go ahead, Councilperson Draw.
I guess I would say, Barbara, thank you for putting that, all those next steps out in, so we can see it right in upfront. Everybody can take a look at what are the three things we've really kind of honed in on. So I'm still in much favor of the Shadow Pines, obviously, and the upgraded LED lights. And, you know, a favorite of mine is really wanting to do something with the Town Center. So I know Carrie and I have been talking about that as far as with Mark and Marie as well, too. And so, I'm extremely happy with these ideas, and I think that, you know, the residents, we've heard from people on these, so I think that that's, we have a good start, and I thank you for all the work on this.
Yeah, and I would agree with Councilwoman Draw's comments on that. I had a few questions that I was ready to ask Mr. Tate tonight, but unfortunately, he's not here. And I don't know if Mark is standing in at all on the lighting project, or is that pretty much Eric's?
It's pretty much Eric's. I did exchange some messages with him today, and no, he was not here tonight. He said he got some of the information in, but not all the information he was looking for, so even he didn't have the latest information on that, and that's why he asked...
Great. So we'll hear back from him.
Yeah, that's why he asked the supervisor to table it tonight. He wanted some additional information to come back to the Board before he was ready to speak.
Sure, great.
We'll put it on the 22nd in follow-up.
Great, thank you. And the only other, I guess, clarification, maybe more than anything, the Shadow Pines portion of this project, I guess we'll call, we're only talking pickleball in that one portion of the property, so there was, I know there was some plan for open fields and things, but that's phased, right? That's a second phase project or somewhere down the road.
Yeah, I mean, we'll look with the northeast corner, we've been focused on, and showing the parking lot, you know, the bathroom, the shelter, pickleball. We've got some future areas for playgrounds. I think we'd go in and kind of rough grade all of it, so at least we've got it graded at the beginning, bring the utilities and get that done, and then we could look at, you know, phasing in some of the other elements. I know we've got playgrounds, we've got, you know, we had future hardcore areas identified in there and kind of see how the park, you know, or the property gets utilized, you know, what, you know, the public demands, needs are. You know, once we kind of get this first step in and get some of the stuff established, then, you know, I think we'll hear more of, you know, what the public's looking for and what the residents need, and then, you know, we can, you know, continue into later phases.
And one of the things, I guess, I hear discussion about or get asked about from the public is that row of pine trees that exist currently that we all know are not in great shape, they're diseased, and where would that fall into the project as far as Phase 1 and Phase...
Phase 1 is going to have some impacted trees on that northeast corner. We do have a landscape plan as part of this, so you say there are a lot of mature trees, and they say that those pines are unfortunately reaching the end of their life cycle, so some of those, you know, may be impacted, but we do have a landscape plan. We're looking to, you know, incorporate into this and then bring, you know, new trees in and plant it at the beginning, and then those can start to grow and, you know, reestablish as, you know...
So to be more specific, when we talk about the Shadow Pines, that amount of money, does that include money for replanting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and to the supervisor's question, I think that would be a great thought with some replacement pines, perhaps, you know, outside the line of where they are now, and I don't know if there's enough buffer space in there currently, but maybe some mature trees. And then, I assume that whatever trees, existing trees can be preserved, will be, I'm assuming.
Yeah, we'll identify as we go to this next phase. We've kind of had the conceptual overall layout. As we go into bid specs, we'll identify if there are individual trees that can be saved. Again, we've got to do, it's not just where the element's going, we have got to do some overall grading, we've got to do storm waters, we've got to put a pond in, we've got to run utilities, so unfortunately, more trees are going to go than we would like, the Board would like. You know, but to get the overall grading done and everything else, you kind of, unfortunately, sometimes to rip the Band-Aid off and kind of do some of those things, but if you can then, you know, plant some landscaping early on, you know, within a few years, it starts to reestablish itself, and then, you know, will look like a well-planned-out, you know, designed amenity to the community.
You know, I definitely think we'd be interested in that, and in particular, if we can plant maybe some more mature trees, start rather than, you know, obviously...
Yeah, we're not looking to do saplings and everything else, but there is some balance, and I've had those conversations with our, the Town Landscape Consultant Arborist. There's also a balance between size of trees planted and how fast they grow, and I've actually noticed it in my own neighborhood. I saw a neighbor around the corner that got a tree spaded, planted it, put it in. It was bigger to start with. I've planted some smaller trees, and my trees have well outgrown there, so he's got some thoughts that, you know, not saplings, but, you know, your normal one, two-inch caliper trees don't have as much root loss and don't have as much impact when you plant them. So yes, they look a little smaller when they're originally planted, but they seem to establish themselves and grow much faster when you kind of have a big spaded tree and put it in. It has so much root loss, it takes many, many years to reestablish that root mass. It just kind of sits there, and it seems to take longer to grow. So I've had some conversation with him, and I've kind of tried to observe on my own. I've actually noticed that while the little bit smaller trees, you know, don't look as impactful at the beginning, tend to grow faster in the long term.
And I understand this is a long-term project. I know the Town Board will feel that way.
Yeah, so, yeah, we will look to identify, you know, areas of trees that, you know, can be preserved in that next step and that next piece, and that kind of follows into our next item on the agenda as well.
Sure. So I think we could probably go one of two ways here, and I need to ask the Town Board what they prefer. We can continue this discussion when we have Eric's numbers, hopefully, on the 22nd, so we could table this, or we could continue this discussion on the 22nd. I know we don't have to have a public hearing, but is there desire to have a public hearing for this project as well? To discuss this plan?
To discuss the entire, you know...
Right, this plan right here.
We've opened this up to the public already, and we've, I guess I'm in favor of having a public hearing, if the Board wants to as well. I feel that the people have the opportunity to speak on this, to make comments and everything, and I think going with the three items that we've chosen as a Board, that we think that we've heard a lot on what we want to do, that I think we've given people a chance, but it's up, you know, if you guys feel really strongly against, you know, not having a public hearing, I mean, I don't know...
No, I would tend to agree. I think these items are good items. I think they're, we started in the right place, and if the public, give the public the opportunity to speak to those particular projects, I think is beneficial.
I would like to see us then proceed with a public hearing at some point.
I would, too. We, you know, we try to be as transparent as possible, and I think one of those items is really having a formal public hearing, even though we're not required to. I do think it's important, so I think we're all in agreement, actually. Are we ready to set a public hearing, or would you like to continue this discussion on the 22nd before doing so?
I'd be ready to move for a public hearing.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to move this to a public hearing.
Absolutely, so I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion by Councilperson Ockenden and a second by Councilperson Draw. And a roll call vote, please.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All ayes.
Okay, I'm not suggesting that we not, you should continue with the 22nd as well, because then Eric will be here for the LED part of that discussion. So if we could schedule the public hearing in July...
We would need to do that just for the purposes of public notice and getting it in the paper and listening, noticing it properly, so we'll look at the earliest possible date for the next one of the legislative meetings in July.
I'm forgetting where we are in the month. Thank you.
I know, and then we have that fifth Wednesday that'll throw everybody off, so...
Definitely.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, and thank you, Barbara and Mark, for your help with this. Appreciate it. Okay, we will move to Action Item C, Shadow Pine Seeker Review with Mr. Valentine.
So this is, actually, in talking about the Shadow Pines development, kind of being preemptive of that, we looked at, see, as part of it, doing the secret analysis and the environmental review on it, is whether we type this a Type 1 action. So we took a look at it based on the size and the scope of what it is, the proximity to the other things around it. Being conservative, if we type it as a Type 1 action, this Board could take the action tonight to declare itself lead agency on that, and then we could send out the letters to the other interested involved agencies just to kind of get that ball rolling, and then, in the meantime, you know, we can work with the Board to, you know, fill out the EAF, go through the environmental, you know, review and impact of what, you know, this development looks like, get those letters back, and then, you know, look to take action in the future. But just kind of the next steps we need to take is we're looking towards development and bidding and, you know, completing, you know, the approval from the other agencies and everything else, so...
So, Mark, this is really just a formal process?
Yes, we've not prepared the document for the Board, you know, to review, you know, this evening. Looking if the Board, you know, feels comfortable, we want to make it a Type 1 action, we need to send out the letters to the other agencies, you know, get that process, you know, moving forward. So this evening, if the Board was comfortable, we could, you know, the Board could declare the intent to be lead agent on this, if you wanted to take that action, and then we'll send out the appropriate letters and at least get the process started.
Do we need to have a resolution prepared for this, or just decide that we want to act as lead agency?
You just need to declare lead agency on that, and then we can get started.
Okay. I mean, to me, that's a very easy decision. Yes, we should, so is everyone else in favor?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Do I need to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna...
I think I do.
You might want to, we might want to do a resolution declaring intent for lead agency. That's a, I think either way is okay, but it creates a nice track record.
Actually, I'm in favor of that resolution because that's generally how we do that in planning and zoning, so I'd like to stay consistent if possible. Right? Okay.
So I would make that motion that we proceed with the Shadow Pine Seeker Review Resolution.
Okay.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilperson Draw and a second by Councilperson Ockenden to prepare a resolution declaring seeker review and declaring the town as the lead agency. Roll call vote, please.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you very much. Action Item E, 2146 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road Subdivision. Ms. Ivors, you are on the hot seat.
Yes, the public hearing for this was conducted a few weeks ago. We had no one speak for or against it. This is a fairly straightforward decision or action that's required. I would request a resolution, or to prepare a resolution approving the subdivision of land. For those watching at home, 2146 is the location of the new Burger King on Route 250. It's south of 441. Currently, the parcel, in a very large form, it needs to be split so that the future development site to the east of the building, which was approved by this Board previously, will be its own standalone parcel. So it's creating two separate parcels, one where the Burger King sits, and then the secondary one for future development site.
And I just want to be clear, there's no application before the Board.
All we're doing is subdividing. Correct. We're just drawing a line on a piece of paper officially with Monroe County real property.
Okay.
It's an official line, it's a very official line. I don't want to undermine how important it is, but it's a line.
And I know we had the public hearing, we did not receive any other comments after that.
Correct.
Okay.
So I would make a motion that we approve that we look for a resolution for 2146 Fairport Nine Mile Point Subdivision, application to subdivide that. I know Councilman Ockenden and I were both up on that property this past weekend, as long, as well as you and Carrie, so we did notice this and looked at it, so I'm fine with it to move that to resolution.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion by Councilperson Draw, and I feel like a broken record. Second by Councilperson Ockenden to prepare a resolution approving the subdivision application for 2146 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road.
Okay, Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to Action Item F, Chapter 94 Amendment Local Law with Ms. Ivors and Ms. Baal.
Carrie's going to take the lead.
I, so what we have before us, and I'm trying to get it onto the screen for us, is the New York State Department of State is the department that oversees the Uniform Building Code. That is, includes the Building Code, Property Maintenance Code, Fire Code, Electrical Code, all of the codes that the town of Penfield is responsible for enforcing. As a result, our Chapter 94 needs some updating in order to be compliant and match the state's model law. So really, what we did with this proposed amendment is take the model law, compare it to Chapter 94 as it existed in the code, identify the additions, edits, modifications, made those, so that really our local code is in lockstep with what the state has asked local municipalities to implement. And so, there weren't, there are some, there are two new sections that are brand-new in the code, and so the numbering subsequent to that has changed, and I would point you to, I believe it's Sections 13 and 14. One has to do with climate-related, and then the other, forgive me, and I'm going to scroll there feverishly to try to get you there. Section 14 is the Climatic and Geographic Design Criteria. That's a new addition compared to what was in the code previously, and I believe it's the following section after that, and I'm so sorry that I'm going to make everybody dizzy who's trying to watch this. Bear with me, and I just scrolled right past it. But there are two sections that the state had that our, our code did not have at all, so we've added those in.
Okay.
In addition, in Article 2, we made some minor modifications so that the titling of the code matches the intent. So in that section of Article 2, we're really talking about the electrical inspection process, not developing our own electrical code. So we wanted to just clarify that particular section. And so, these are really very rudimentary changes, and honestly, they're just required for us to be in compliance with New York State guidance.
Okay. I know we're going to set a public hearing tonight for this.
This actually, forgive me, yes, we are going to set a public hearing. This is to initiate the local law process.
Correct. Okay, but what I'm wondering is, for the purposes of people who want this information, can we highlight on the website what the changes are, or at least draw attention to them?
We can, and I believe we can certainly do that. We can, what we can do is also provide the state's model law, so they can see exactly how our law matches the state's model law as well. Happy to do that, and certainly happy to highlight places where changes, major changes were made, particularly the two sections that were, that were added in sort of brand-new.
I mean, I know there are thousands out there watching who are just...
Waiting with bated breath for the updated code.
Yes, I just want to make it easy for people to find.
Absolutely.
Maybe even listed by page number for somebody who's just taken a quick glance and wants to get to where the changes are.
Yep, absolutely. Happy to do that. We can provide that.
Hypertext them or something, yeah, that's fine.
We can do that. We can certainly provide some guidance as to where the changes are located.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Go ahead.
Because I was looking, and I believe it's right in the first page here, and I just, I was going to ask you about this. I thought it was interesting. Sugar House, a building used in Hola Park for the collection, storing a maple sap. Do we still, does that have to be?
So this is, well, you know what? We can ask New York State Department of State that question, because I had the same thought. That is a very specific ad.
I just wondered.
That was not in a previous model code, and so my guess would be, if I'm just guessing out loud, that somebody who'd helped develop the model code might be located in the Adirondacks or someplace where sugar mapleing is very popular.
I have to say, my husband does sugaring every year, and I'm just wondering, we don't have a sugar house. We just put it in the backyard.
It's a very specific, yeah, and the other additional, very specific item that was added had to do with mobile food, mobile food trucks or carts, so that was another very specific ad. But we're just following New York State's guidance.
And you'll highlight that, all those new ads?
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll highlight the places that new information was added in.
Perfect. Great. Okay, so may I have a motion to set a public hearing?
I will set, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
And I'll second that.
All right, surprise. We have a motion by Councilperson Ockenden and a second by Councilperson Draw to set a public hearing for Chapter 94 Amendment Local Law.
Okay, Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to Action Item G, Cannabis Retail Dispensary Local Law.
So as we've discussed previously, just in sort of general terms, we've talked about the fact that the town has opted in for retail dispensary. However, our code is currently silent on that as a use, and so, following the Town Board's lead, developed cannabis regulations to amend Chapter 250, which is the zoning code, to identify cannabis retail dispensaries as a conditional use. And I'll bring that up for you now as we're speaking. So this would be adding into the list of, into three specified districts. That would be limited business, general business, and light industrial. Those would be the three districts where this would be a conditional use, and then specifies the considerations, regulations, and things that need to be taken into consideration when the conditional use permit is being considered for that, for a future location. And so, it's, bear with me for a moment, I have, I've managed to give myself two versions in here, and I... I have, I've managed to give myself two versions in here, and I wanna make sure.
I was gonna ask you, there's two in the drive. Is it the same thing?
Yeah, I think I might have, I think I might have just copied it both in being very extra cautious and making sure you had it for your review. And so you'll, you'll note that Section 1 adds cannabis retail dispensary as a conditional use type to, into Section or Article 13. It also then identifies other areas that need to be amended to marry the cannabis retail dispensary in other places where conditional use is a reference. So we add it as a definition. So we know what the definition is. We also, oh, forgive me, there are two versions. I will, I will give you the most, make sure the most current one is updated and attached to the, a future resolution when you're ready to move forward with a local law or the public hearing for a local law. So I will say that we, we've identified, and we're working with the attorney because we're identifying also the other changes that might need to be made to make sure that everything coordinates and there's not creating any gray area or any discrepancy between conditional uses, if that makes sense.
Yes.
And we, and I think we, and I will share with you that based on some internal staff review, there is, there are some updates and changes that are currently under review by the town attorney. And so for that reason, we may wanna hold off on setting the public hearing until we've had an actual chance to have those completely vetted so that the, the draft local law that's presented to the public when the, at the time when the public hearing is set is 100% as close as we can get it before public comment.
I think, I speak for the board. I think when, when we would appreciate that.
Okay.
I know that I would like some soak time with this.
Absolutely.
Even though I've worked on it with you, sometimes things just come to me.
Absolutely.
So I would feel most comfortable just continuing this discussion on the 22nd.
Absolutely. And what I'll do is I'll ensure that the latest and greatest version, because as you can imagine, we've, this has been going through a series of updates and changes. And we'll make sure that the most current version is available for your review.
Okay, appreciated. I'm just curious, Heidi, you know, I know you've probably read it as well as the code enforcement officer. Do you have any thoughts or concerns, comments? Love it, hate it?
I think we're on the right path.
Okay.
But I definitely wanna make sure that everybody is on the same page so we don't get jammed up in the future with, you know, whatever happens.
Right.
So we're having the attorneys look at it. Absolutely.
Okay, because I know that this is going to affect your department.
Oh, yeah.
So I just wanna make sure we're all comfortable with it.
Yep.
Okay. If it's okay with everyone, can we just continue this discussion on the 22nd?
Absolutely.
That's fine.
Okay.
There's one question. Could I ask just right now?
Please.
Just, and maybe, maybe we wanna discuss it on the 22nd. Under C, do we have to, are we required to use, have it in all three of those? The general business district, a light industrial district, and a limited district, limited business district?
So the, that's certainly a topic for conversation. I think in, in reviewing this across the state, a couple of things jump out. You have to make sure that you are zoning it in a way that doesn't de facto not allow them because then we would be in trouble with New York State. If we didn't want them, we would have had the option to opt out of dispensaries. If you're going to opt in, then you need to make sure that the zoning at least allows for the development. In looking at the industry, most of the, when we look at how it's zoned, and it's gonna take some time, I think, for folks to understand or get their, maybe mentally, this is very new. But it's much the same way that liquor stores, how liquor stores are handled, where they can be located. And they are treated as a retail entity. And so that's why the cannabis dispensaries are retail cannabis dispensaries. So in some ways, they're, I think in the state's eyes, gonna be treated or be akin to how the Liquor Authority handles liquor, handing out liquor licenses for liquor stores. But again, because it's new, every town's sort of trying to figure out how to navigate the review and approval process. Certainly something to be talked about, though.
Thank you for the information. Thank you.
And I would just call attention for the board members to, just to read through this draft on Page 2 on minimum distances. It has specific information about how, where a dispensary can be sighted, you know.
And the, and towns do have local control. The state has its own requirements. They won't issue a license to an establishment if it's within a certain distance. The town, I think, our distances are bigger than what the state's minimum requirements are. And that's okay, as long as, again, you're not zoning them out the door.
Right. And to that point, if there are differences between state regulations and the town, the stricter, more restrictive position will, will apply.
Yes.
Provision, I should say.
Correct.
Okay, great. All right, so we'll continue this discussion on the 22nd.
Okay, great.
Mr. Valentine?
So sidewalks, this is a follow-up to our conversation from two weeks ago. At that meeting, we had identified a couple of priority locations. We'd received a petition from a location on Five Mile Line, just north of Victory Garden, between there and, and the park. Subsequent to that, I've had some back and forth emails with the resident that would be affected by that. We've yet to meet on site, but looking to set a date to meet out there, see what the impact would be, how that might work out. One of the other priority locations, and the petition we received was on Shoe Craft. We were looking for some clarification on what end of Shoe Craft. Our budget currently doesn't allow us to do all of it. But which end would they prefer, you know, if we were to start? I spoke with Mr. Robeluski, and my apologies if I got that wrong. I spoke with him. He was the original petitioner that went door to door and got that from the residents. The people he spoke to had preferred to start on the Five Mile Line end. Ultimately, they'd like to get to Rothfuss Park, as many others do. So they thought if it started at Five Mile and then made its way towards Bella Drive and around the curve. We had started to generate some costs on that, you know, in those costs. Again, the entire road is more than, you know, what we've accommodated in our budget for this year. Yep. But if you pop that up, so this kind of lists out all the sidewalks. So the ones that we put at the top, you know, were the ones we'd had petitions on or identified as, you know, priorities. So if you look right at the top, it has Shoe Craft Drive, all of it together. Our rough cost estimate, we're almost at $600,000 for all of Shoe Craft Road. We identify, next is Plank Road. There's a small piece on Plank Road. I think the board was comfortable moving with that. That's, you know, 200 feet. That'll fill in a gap. That was $22,000. Then we've got a rollover from our 2021 budget was the piece by Gentles Market on Old Penfield Road. So that's on last year's money we rolled over. Waiting to get that finalized. We're working with Dolomite on that. And then there's the Five Mile Line piece we spoke about. And then tried to break down in that lower section. So both those Shoe Craft there add up to that upper number. So just showing that those are smaller pieces. So if we went from Plank to Garden Hill Lane, that's about 1,600 feet. If we started at Shoe Craft, or on Shoe Craft, excuse me, from Five Mile to Bella Drive, that's about 3,200 feet. But still, that puts us in about the $300,000 range. So, you know, if the board wants to proceed, again, our budget's 180 for this year. But we could at least get the survey, maybe refine our number, get closer to that, and then, you know, see how you wanna move forward. But just looking for...
I just had a question. Five Mile Line is obviously two projects. We're talking about that.
Yep.
The first one that you just mentioned by the Shoe Craft Plank area, but then also Windsor Ridge to Rothfuss Park. How much was that again?
I think that was...
I just am having trouble reading this spreadsheet.
Yep, if you just scan over, I think it's about 70 and change.
Where are you trying to have me go? Okay.
You gotta slide over another column over to, keep sliding, keep sliding.
Oh, forgive me.
So that, we had estimated about 72,000. So if we've got 22,000 was the piece on Plank Road, the 20,000 was in this year's, last year's budget. And then we've got the 72,000. So that puts us at 94. And then we can look at, you know, a portion of Shoe Craft Road and how far can we get, you know. But if the board wants to move on that, at least we could do the survey work, start some initial design and layout. You know, we try to be conservative with our numbers, look at drainage, look at, do we extend a culvert? We've got some grading work to do. Once we get the survey, you know, maybe that number tightens up a little bit. But, you know, we could see how far we could go and, you know, how far, you know, we could extend that sidewalk if that's where you wanna choose to go with it this year.
So Mark, can you just clarify then that we're looking at the Five Mile Line Road. It says from 1724 Five Mile. Just draw for me and...
Yep. In the meantime, Carrie can pull it up on the screen. But basically, it's from the Victory Garden. There's a small gap as you head towards Lone Oak.
Yep, okay.
As you head towards Rothfuss Park on the east side of the road, there's a small gap in that portion.
And then, sorry, let me go further north. There's a piece in here for that section, right?
So, yep. So that's the 1724 piece. You can see the sidewalk on the south. There's the Victory Garden and then the sidewalk on the north. So that's the piece we're looking at there. There's a fair bit of grading.
Right.
That would have to be done in the, in the front yard, you know, possible retaining wall to sort that out.
Yep. So, and then just going further north, north of the park, there's a section that's been petitioned, right? Is that the...
The petition is for, we've had requests for the piece north of the park on Five Mile Line. We did not receive a petition for that. The petition is, if you keep going north, Carrie, up to Shoe Craft Road is the petition we got. So starting at Five Mile, going up Shoe Craft is the piece. So right there. So that's why I referenced Five Mile again. There's a small piece with the group home there, you know, we could pick up at that location and then, and then head east. But there is a gap to the south.
So we're trying to get people to the park?
There is a gap to the south, and we could look at that, you know, piece as well. But again, you know, that'll be above and beyond what we've got currently slated in our budget. But we could look at, you know, if there's other funds there.
So that's, that's down here under the public requests.
Correct. That's, we've got that noted in there. That was not the piece we received, you know, a petition for, but, you know, a piece that, you know, has been requested in the past. And I think, you know, worthwhile piece to, you know, connect into the park as well.
Yeah. Well, that's it. If we're trying to safely get people from Shoe Craft.
And I think the Shoe Craft people, I think first and foremost is concerns of the speed on the road, the curve around the corner. People have had, you know, mailboxes hit and had some other impacts, you know, from, you know, people navigating the roads. They're looking to safely walk their dog, their kids, you know, be off the road. Ultimately, we'd like to get to the park. But unfortunately, as we all know, construction costs just, you know, continue to go up and up and up. And it's just, yeah, harder to get as much sidewalk installed for, you know, what we've done in the past.
And any of these are for next year or is it the upper?
I mean, it depends. I mean, Shoe Craft Road is a town road. That's a little bit easier. Obviously, we'd have to, if the board says go on those tonight, call the surveyor tomorrow, see how fast they can get out there, maybe a month or two before the surveyor can get out there. We've got to then do the design. We've got to get through any permitting and then see where the contractors are. Likely would be fall at earliest for these. Five Mile Line is a county road. Excuse my voice tonight. Five Mile Line is a county road, therefore, we've got to develop a higher level of plans, submit it to the county. They'd wanna review it, go through it. So likely, if it wasn't in Five Mile, it would probably be a 2023 construction. But if we've got the design done, we've got the work completed, contact the neighbors, secure easements, you know, all of that. You know, we could encumber the money from this year into next year or partner this year's funds and next year's funds. And, you know, that could be, you know, a 2023 construction.
So the piece from, you know, getting back to the one from the Victory Garden onto the Rothfuss, that, that, yeah, that part of it, you're just waiting now to meet with the, meet with the resident? And if she, if he or she says to go ahead, I think this is something that, you know, we've talked about, we'd like to see that connectivity.
They had reached out and just said, you know, what was the plan? And I said, at this point, you know, we've gotten dozens of requests. We haven't designed out, you know, all the different locations. I just said, we haven't done the design yet. I haven't done any survey work yet. Would happy to meet on site, walk it with them, discuss what may or may not need to be done. You know, hopefully, you know, they're agreeable to, you know, some grading, you know, whether we've got to do a retaining wall, whether they, you know, be willing to grant an easement. And obviously, if they're, you know, willing to work with on a lot of those things, then we can work through the design, make sure they're, they're comfortable with it, and then, you know, proceed from there. But again, that's along the county right away, so, you know, we'll have to work with the county as well. So that would be close on timing, you know, as whether that could still be constructed this year. I think some portions of it could be, you know, and then, you know, whatever other piece we could encumber and roll into early next season.
And I do wanna just remind everyone watching out there that, you know, we do receive many requests, more than we can accommodate for sure in one year. And our priority is always, you know, to serve the most amount of people and also contribute to the safety is, you know, what's gonna contribute most to public safety. So I don't want anyone to feel like it's, you know, why isn't my project being discussed or whatever? We're trying. It's just, we have to look at how this pot of money gets distributed the most effective way possible.
And I think I also, you know, had shared that, you know, we did get the two petitions. So know that there's a lot of public interest in those, more than, you know, just one call. And then some residents took it upon themselves to go to all the neighbors. And obviously, if we can garner more support, that makes our job a lot easier. If somebody's willing to grant an easement, if somebody's supportive of sidewalks, want sidewalks, you know, that's one of the biggest things we run into is most everybody wants sidewalks, but likely on the other side of the road, it may take out a tree, a shrub on their property. We've got to do some regrading. You know, there's always some accommodations that need to be done to install them after the fact. So if somebody's, you know, willing to go to the, you know, all the neighbors and get them on board for it, you know, that definitely makes, you know, staff's job a lot easier, you know, when we go out there to, you know, start laying them out, doing the design, that knowing the neighbors are all supportive of it and we're not, you know, we're gonna run into any issues.
Okay. Could I hear from town board members about what they'd like to see happen next?
I feel like we'd like to get started on some of these rather than keep talking about them. I guess prioritizing or which ones, I don't know if you have a recommendation, Mark, based on, you know, things like ease? What can we get started, maybe save, get in this year and?
Yeah, I think that small one on Plank Road is just a one-house, you know, infill. I think that's easily enough done. I think the piece on Five Mile, depending on the conversation, you know, with the resident, I think we at least could get the survey done and get the design going on that one. And then even to do the survey on Shoe Craft, you know, get the survey done on that portion, you know, and then, you know, start, you know, the design on that. And then we could look at how far out we can build. And then as we kind of come towards the end of this year, beginning of next, maybe either we look at doing that piece on Five Mile Line, connecting to the park, and then extend another piece on Shoe Craft. But, you know, there can be multiple phases of a project. And when we did Panorama Trail, that took us three or four years to kind of work our way up the hill. So, you know, based on money, funds, and everything else, we kind of did a portion, did another portion. So I think we could kind of nibble away at it and, you know, meet some of those goals and...
Right.
Fill in some of those pieces.
I would appreciate it if we could look at the Five Mile Line from Windsor Ridge and, you know, hopefully you can meet with the resident soon and move forward with that one. And then, you're right, that smaller area on Plank Road makes a lot of sense. And then see how far we can get on Shoe Craft.
Sure.
I agree. I think that's a good...
Yeah, with that direction, I say we'll, we'll meet with the residents and start down the path. We'll get survey, you know, and get that stuff going. And then, you know, we can come back to the board and provide an update. And then if, we always kind of look at a little bit more. And if something falls through, you know, obviously, we can shift, you know, those monies and continue, you know, on in other locations and other areas. And then, you know, if anybody out there, you know, is looking for stuff for next year, if you can get a petition and get those neighbors on board in that area, that definitely helps to...
And Mark, help me remember, usually start, you usually do sidewalks starting late summer, right? It's pretty much when you're...
I mean, we had, we had with COVID and issues last year that the contractor had trouble getting concrete. So our project from last fall actually got pushed to the spring. So we just did sidewalks coming out in, in early May. We were kind of their first one out of the box. They did sidewalks here at Columbus Crossing. They did some sidewalks on Empire Boulevard. So that was last year's, kind of got done at the first part of this year. You know, we're getting a little later in the season to, you know, we've still gotta do survey, design, permitting, utility work, and all that stuff. So that'll, you know, take us through most of the summer. And then it's a matter of seeing kind of where contractors are come fall as whether it's still feasible to install it this year. Or again, you know, we can encumber that money, build first, you know, part of next year and jump into there. So we're good kind of whenever. It just, I don't wanna promise anybody that they're gonna be in and installed and they're gonna be walking on from 4th of July. You know, obviously, that's not happening this year. But whether it can still happen in the fall, weather depending, contractor depending, you know, construction costs, it all kind of weighs into it.
Okay. So I'm hoping you'll be back to report on... So I'm hoping you'll be back to report on the kind of progress on the 22nd, particularly with the making sure residents are informed and consenting.
Okay. Will do.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Moving along to Action Item I, a request for a hold harmless agreement on Six Hilltop Drive.
In this one, I had asked the board to table this at the last meeting. I appreciate the board doing that. I did have opportunity subsequent to that to go out to the site. I stopped by, no one was home, rang the bell, but was able to, you know, walk around the backyard and take a look at it. I don't see an issue or an impact from granting this old harmless agreement. I had some concerns last time, because we do have a drainage easement through there, but where they located the shed is, is the gentleman shared at the last meeting, is the highest part of the property that he could. So while it's in a corner of the drainage easement, he tried to avoid the impacts, and I believe he also shared that he was looking to take out the, like we're off on us.
There's another shed, an earlier, an earlier one.
Oh, forgive me.
It's up north in the cul-de-sac portion of Hilltop, so it's picking up something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go.
There we are.
So this aerial photo shows the, the original shed kind of in that corner piece that's coming out. They did install a shed, you know, just south of that, so it kind of clips the corner of our drainage easement, but there's a swell and a, and a pipe that kind of runs through that middle portion, but where they have the shed located on the hill slope is, is the best spot that they could have put it. So I'm, after seeing it, now supportive of the, the whole harmless agreement, if the board's comfortable with moving ahead with that.
Understood. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Valentine? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to prepare a resolution signing a hold harmless agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve moving forward for a resolution for Six Hilltop Drive.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Councilperson Ockenden, second by Councilperson Draw, and roll call vote.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay. As our last action item was tabled until the next meeting, that actually concludes our agenda for the evening. I do not see any old, is there any new business?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then seeing none, our next work session is scheduled for June 22nd, and I would declare this meeting adjourned at 7:54 PM.